Hi, my name is John Pierce Mitchum. I'm in sixth grade, sixth grade, and I go to Hodge and Tech Academy. And can I show you the robot program?
Tidum da, tia da. Tida ya. Tida ya. Weh bayara, weh bayara, tiba ya ra, tiba ya ra. Weh bayara, weh bayara, tiba ya ra, tiba ya ra. Tidum da, tia da. Tida ya. Weh bayara, weh bayara, tiba ya ra, tiba ya ra. Tidum da, tia da. Tida ya. Weh bayara, weh bayara, tiba ya ra, tiba ya ra. Weh ra ra. Tidum da, tia da. Tida ya. Tida ya. Weh bayara, weh bayara, tiba ya ra, tiba ya ra. Weh ra ra.
Call this work session to order. Ms. Henry, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Hubbard, here. Ms. Elgin, Sonya. Ms. How.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Ms. President.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Here.
Number four.
Could you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I know what's top of mind for most of us right now as we sit in the audience thinking about the impending inclement weather that's coming our way. So let me just share with you, parents, our students, our staff members. As the St. Louis region braces for a major winter snowstorm, we want to give you early notice that the St. Louis Public Schools will be closed tomorrow, Wednesday, January 25th, for a snow day, for a traditional snow day. All SLPS schools and offices are closed. All previously scheduled district activities and events are canceled for Wednesday, January 25th. Again, we are closed tomorrow, Wednesday, January 25th. Please stay safe and enjoy your traditional snow day. Thank you. So now that we've been able to get that out of the way, top of mind, we want to shift to centering the voices of our students, our student scholars who we serve here in the St. Louis Public Schools. So we are talking about deeper learning. And right now, what I'd like to do is to share with you our deeper learning journey through the eyes of the students, our student scholars who will bring us a deeper learning opportunity as we center their voices. Ms. Vanoy, would you put up the slide, please, that has our ESSR robotics demonstration? I'd like to invite up to the podium Ms. Natasha Mitchell. She is our interim director of virtual learning and gifted education to kind of center us this evening on the work that we'll see. This is our ESSR dollars, our elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund dollars in action. And so we want to demonstrate what our scholars are doing as part of this work. Ms. Mitchell?
I will not be here long, so we can get to our amazing scholars to show off all of their robotic skills. But yes, we are here quite simply to take you on a deeper learning journey this evening through the eyes of scholars as young as kindergarten and through seventh grade. So without further ado, they will introduce themselves. Please welcome our Hodge and Tech and Long scholars.
Testing.
Well, thank you so much for having Hodge in here at the board meeting. I am one incredibly proud principal to introduce you to our phenomenal Hodge and scholars, two of them, and we have...
Hi, my name is Kinsley Saunders. I am in kindergarten at Hodge and Tech Academy.
Excellent, Kinsley. So we are going to hear what Kinsley has programmed us on her dash. Let's hear.
Hi, my name is Kinsley. Hi, I'm Kinsley. I'm from St. Louis. I'm an student of the Hodge and Tech Academy. I'm at the Hodge and Tech Academy. My school is awesome. The state is the best. I love robotics because I did the program.
Excellent, Kinsley. You imagine? Excellent. And now we have...
Hi, my name is John Pierce Mitchum. I'm in sixth grade, sixth grade, and I go to Hodge and Tech Academy. And can I show you the robot program?
Excellent, John Pierce. And can you share with us a little bit about why John Pierce is one of our robotics team members? Can you share with us what you love about robotics?
I love robotics because I love coding and getting creative with building and coding my robot. And I love being a part of a team.
Excellent, excellent. Our Hodge and Robotics team certainly did an amazing job this past weekend where we earned 19th place out of 220 teams in the state. And I'm so, so incredibly proud, so I look forward to the next opportunity we get to present to you where I get to showcase our awesome robotics team. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Principal Kaiser. And I want to just recognize the families of Kinsley and John and the audience. Thank you so much for being here. We deeply appreciate you. And we are so proud of our student scholars. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I am Dr. Benesh Nanis Hana. I'm the principal of Long International Middle School, where we are forging the way with literacy, innovation, and equity. And where we tell everyone, you belong at Long. And we practice the mantra of Sakona Sawa Bona. We are here to be seen, and we see you. And tonight, we are showcasing one of our wonderful robotics students who is taking the opportunity to robotics under our wonderful esteemed teacher, Ms. Reader, our STEM coordinator, our one just STEM everything. She just STEM everything. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tawon Haywood, who has made sure that I have done what I do every single time when I write his name on a pass in an email, added a Y to his name where it's not supposed to be. So, but I'm going to turn the mic over to him where he is going to tell you about all the wonderful things he's doing in STEM.
All right. Hello, my name is Tawon Haywood. I attend Long Middle, and I'm in seventh grade. I love robotics because I think it's fun and it's interesting. Also, it brings out another side of me and helps me think about... and helps me think about school differently. Coding is important to me because I might want to go to college to learn coding or video game making as a job. Learning stuff now will help me when I get to college. Today, I'm going to demonstrate my super cleanup. It's a garbage collector with two different tools, a small one for smaller objects like paper and a larger one for large items like cans and water bottles.
He's... He's got it. Okay. I don't know what to do. He's so nervous. He's like, what?
All right. So this one, this pick up smaller objects like the paper towels. Like, um, cans and towels, um, like cans and water bottles, but we didn't have that, so I gotta live.
Thank you very, very much. We want to thank our principal from Long Middle School, Principal Benisha Hunt, Dr. Hunt, and our principal from Hodgins, Julia Kaiser. Thank you. And we want to thank our student scholars for their excellent work. This is deeper learning in action. We want to thank our parents and our community for being part of this work as we continue to deepen the knowledge and understanding, helping our young people. We say in St. Louis Public Schools, who's doing the heavy lifting? And we want to make sure our children are doing the heavy lifting all the time because the brain is a muscle and we want it to grow and grow and grow as they continue to share their knowledge. So thank you very much. That's our ESSER dollars in action. I'm going to ask our interim chief of staff, Dr. Claire Crepo, to come up and share a little bit about the work that we're doing with ESSER district-wide. You saw some examples of that work. And she'll talk a little bit about what ESSER means for us as a school district, the elementary and secondary school emergency relief update this evening. Thank you, Dr. Crepo.
Good evening. So as Dr. Williams shared, my name is Claire Crepo and I will be providing an overview of our elementary and secondary school relief funds. So the purpose of this presentation, a few things I want to highlight. One is I want to talk about a little bit of background regarding the ESSER funds that we've received over the past few years. I'm also going to spend some time discussing how the funds were allocated to both the schools and departments within the district, how our schools and our departments went about planning. And then I'll talk a little bit more about what sort of purchases our schools and departments have made with the ESSER funds. So just as a reminder, this slide up here gives us a little bit of background regarding our ESSER funding. So in 2020, 2021, we received around $10 million. So those were the CARES Act funds. And I think you can think of those as sort of those immediate emergency relief funds. Right when the pandemic hit, those were the funds we received from the government. And so primarily, those funds were used for PPE, iPads, laptops for students. So we went into straight into action with the CARES Act dollars. The ESSER II funds that we received in 2021, we received $46 million. So that's what I'm going to spend the bulk of my time tonight talking about. We made a decision to allocate around $24 million directly to schools. So of that 46 million, we said we want to make sure that our schools have a direct hand of play with our ESSER II funds. And then finally, you've probably, we've talked a lot about our ESSER III funds, the American Rescue Plan dollars, that will be, some of those dollars will start expending. Next year, we received $103 million. So to emphasize with ESSER II, the three priorities were safely reopening schools, addressing our pre and post unfinished learning, and then finally, building lasting systems of equitable teaching and learning. So this slide here shows the school allocation methodology. So like I said before, we decided to allocate around 55% of our funds directly to schools. We felt strongly that the teachers, principals, those who are closest to students should be making the decisions. And the way we went about determining how much money each school should get was through an equity index. So you can see the equity index up on the screen. So depending on the number of students in the school, the number of students who are free and reduced lunch, students who had IEPs, students in transition and ELL students. We then established that equity index to then distribute funds to schools. So depending on several factors, schools receive different amounts. So anywhere from $78,000 to, for a very small school, that's more like a program, to our largest high school in the district receiving $1.3 million. I want to spend a little bit of time sharing our planning process because though we wanted our schools to be able to make the decisions around how they would expend dollars, we wanted to provide some strategic supports along the way and some parameters. So a couple of things. In September and October of 2021, so over a year ago, partnering with the academic office and our finance department, we created an approved vendor list. We wanted to make sure that our schools were not bogged down with the procurement process. So when they wanted to buy something, they would be able to buy it. So we established a pretty long list of vendors that schools could buy from without having to go through the procurement process. Once we established a purchasing process, we wanted to make sure we could clear out as much red tape as possible. We provided a lot of targeted professional development sessions with our schools. We also established a planning template for our schools. We wanted to make sure that all of their plans were based on data and goals within their school buildings. The plans were submitted for review in December 2021, and schools received a lot of feedback along the way from their network superintendents, other members of district staff. I'll talk a little bit about how we involved other stakeholders in the planning process in a moment. Our plans were approved on a rolling basis and schools began expending funds last March of 2022. So it was a lengthy process, but that was on purpose. It was very strategic and intentional to make sure that our schools were buying things that would be supporting students. We didn't want just things, just buying stuff for our kids. It needed to be aligned to their goals and aligned to data. So a little bit of information about our planning process. Every school, it looked very different, but we made sure to involve our students and our teachers and our families in different ways. So for our students, and a lot of this depended on the age groups. We had surveys, small group discussions, focus groups. A lot of principals talked with students on their student council. In terms of families, we requested that for all of the plans that our school submitted, at least one parent signed off on the plan. And we often asked, if possible, it was a representative from their PTO. But again, it was varied school by school and also varied by age group. And then finally, with schools, how they included teachers, again, it looked very different. We had surveys, the creation of teacher wish lists, teacher interviews. We also required that a minimum of one teacher was included on the ESSER planning committee. And I'll talk about what we're doing now at the end to ensure that our teachers' voices are being heard and we're purchasing what our teachers need. So we're doing a couple of additional things with that. Really, the goal of these ESSER funds, we know that these are one-time funds. And so we want to make sure that we're maximizing their use. So what we did is thought about how can we ensure that we're creating equity, access, and opportunity for our students? So this list that you see here, again, this is all chosen by schools. We did give them parameters. We said we want to make sure that the funds are related to direct academic supports for students. So that could be tutoring, tier-one instruction, supplemental materials, licenses, books, any of that sort of stuff. We also talked about flexible seating. That has been a big push for our school. Students, that is one of the things that they ask for. They want new furniture. And so if you walk in buildings, you've probably seen in different schools where you flexible seating. So sometimes it's a reading corners, it's a calm corner, it could be the whole classroom. It's varied school by school, and we've relied on teacher voice for that piece. And then finally, we asked that all schools allocate approximately 15% of their budget towards field experiences. So that means field trips to the Black Rep, Jefferson City. We have students going on college visits. It has to be academically focused. And we have students going on several field trips from across all of our schools this coming spring. The other thing I want to point out is if you look at that picture at the very top, that is the media center that's going into Gateway STEM High School. So that involves virtual reality equipment. The majority of our high schools are purchasing virtual reality equipment. We also have a lot of elementary schools deciding to put in STEM or STEAM rooms within their buildings. Again, all of this is what the school is saying, this is what we need, and this is what we have the space to do. So there's a lot of text on the screen in terms of our district purchases. A few things that I want to highlight. So technology, interactive boards in all of our classrooms. For operations, there are several projects listed there, and I'll talk at the end about some of the projects that they're doing in the summer. But you can see asphalt repair, custodial supplies, playground, duct cleaning, infrastructure repairs. In terms of academics, I really appreciate the presentation that Ms. Mitchell made because under the leadership of Dr. Smith Jr. and Ms. Mitchell, they've really prioritized robotics. So all students have access to DASH in elementary schools and the Lego Spike Prime in middle school. So it's more than just clubs, it's access for all students as a result of their ESSER dollars. And then finally, for student support, as you've heard in the past, before and after care is available to all of our schools as a result of our funding, an SEL curriculum and platform and trauma-informed practices. They're looking to do a train-the-train model as we move into the spring and next year. The two other purchases that I think are really important to highlight that you all heard a lot about at the beginning of the year have to do with the student backpacks and supplies. Very popular amongst our families and our teachers. And I think along with giving our teachers and students what they needed, it also made them feel valued. And so it is something we're planning to continue doing this coming year as well. We also fund the retention incentives through the ESSER funding as well. So a couple of next steps. We have set a deadline internally as a district of March 31st for all of our schools to encumber their funds. The federal deadline is not until September of 2023. We want to make sure that we have adequate time to ensure that all of our dollars are expended to support our students. So what we're doing right now is providing a lot of support to our schools around how to expend strategically the remaining funds that they have. The other piece is we really want to make sure that teacher voice is included in this. So working with our principals on special assignment, they've created an electronic way that teachers can submit, I would call them supply lists or wish lists directly to their school principals. It's almost like they're creating their own online shopping cart to say, here are the things that I need for my art class, for my chemistry class. And it varies school by school, but that's something we're putting in place for all of our schools so that we can make sure that teachers have a say. The other piece I think is important to note is that we are continuing to coordinate all the materials coming in. We are not the only district in the country that's facing a lot of supply chain challenges. And so oftentimes, when we order something, there is a bit of a delay. So someone might have ordered something three months ago, it might have been out of stock. The company now has it in stock and it's coming in. So there's just a lot of coordination of the delivery that we have to do. And then you can see this long list of work that our operations team is undergoing in summer of 2023. So fence removal, again, more HVAC equipment and control upgrades, painting, furniture. I want to point out cafeteria furniture will be new for all of our schools, and that's coming through ESSER. There's just been a delay. It's another supply chain issue, water bottle filling stations, and then security upgrades. So a lot of work is coming up in the summer specifically with facilities. So I am happy to take any questions or provide any clarity at this time.
You actually answered. You beat me to the punchline on the supply chain. I was looking at the operations and the security upgrades. I know we've heard about the cameras and things of that nature. I was concerned and hoping that all of the safety officers actually have the radios that they need, given the nature of what we're dealing with.
So the question is around, do they have, are we ordering additional radios?
Do they all have the necessary radios they need per site?
Safety officers do have radios. They actually were issued out this week. Our principals have them as well. So we are, and we're still looking at other safety measures, but they do all have their handheld radios.
And in regards to the fencing, it looks like you were saying the fencing will start going in in the summer.
So upon board approval, I believe it's on the agenda coming up, but that work will likely begin this summer is the removal and the installation of the newer type of fencing. It's a vinyl fencing, similar to what you see in playgrounds.
So are these, are we matching the ESSER dollars with the state dollars we were able to receive in regards to the fence removal and replacement?
Yes, the district was awarded $800,000 in ARPA funds for fence removal, letting within fencing. And we do have to match that $800,000, which I think the proposal that came in was around 1.9. So part of that money will be matched with those funds received from the state.
Okay. And then I think this is, I don't know if you can answer this, Ms. Crepo, but I heard you say something in regards to the PTO, getting input from the PTO. Do we know actively how many PTOs we actually have within the district?
That's an excellent question. I don't have that information, but I can get that information for you.
Okay. And my last question, they always say I hog it, so I'm sorry. My last question is, I'm looking at 2020, you were saying in 2020, 21, the first CARES Act dollars, the 10.6. This was the dollars where all of our students received laptops, correct?
Correct, or iPads.
Correct, or iPads. So is it safe to say that all of our students have iPads or laptops?
Yes, and I would say they have access to it. They should all be able to use them at school. Whether or not they're taking them home, it's dependent upon whether the contract was signed. But as a result of the funds, they do have the access to those iPads or laptops.
Okay. And then the 2023, 2024, that has to be spent by when? The 103 million has to be spent before?
Great question. September 2024. As it stands, unless something changes from the federal government, I know there are a lot of districts that are asking the federal government to take another look and extend the deadline, but at this, they haven't done that. So we're operating off of September 30th of 2024.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, excuse me. Good evening. I would like to know, and this is something that I observed recently when the board took a trip to Central VPA. And I looked at a sign that was out in front on King's Highway. And I was trying to figure out whether or not that sign belonged to Central VPA or did it go to the Biotech School. But the thing is, this is something that's been on my mind for years. I want to understand, why is it that we don't provide those type of signage, digital or solar power, alternative, whatever, in front of every SLPS school? Because when I was thinking about the day that we had that tragic event, it would have been really good to be able to look up at the sign and say what was going on immediately. And if the district was able to control those signs or the individual schools so that people wouldn't have to wonder so much. And you could, if a parent was driving by or someone on the street was driving by, they would know, oh, they're having a performance tonight. I can participate. I can participate. Or we're having a PTO meeting and we need people. The way that we can communicate with the public immediately instead of having to put out a newsletter or depend upon the news media to help us out. So I'm really hoping that some of those ESSR dollars can go toward providing new digital signs outside of each of one of our schools. And like I said, the one on King's Highway was in desperate need of a replacement. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. And I appreciate that that's been a conversation amongst many of our schools, especially, that's the question, can they use our ESSR funds for this? So I'll take this request to our ESSR committee. I think certainly if it's not out of ESSR, we have been exploring other ways to upgrade the signage outside. So we agree with you.
I just have a couple of questions. So in terms of the investments we've made so far, investments that we think we may have to renew after this money is gone. Have we identified that and started talking about that? So I'd imagine the technology is certainly something, there's no turning back on that. I would hope that we could find ways to continue to fund aftercare. And I don't know if there's any others that, you know, we've invested in kind of a unique way this, this time, and, and we know that we're going to have to continue to do it.
There are a couple of things. So you mentioned a few. The other piece is a lot of our schools have had the choice around what supplemental licenses that they've wanted to purchase for their building. So that's something else. So typically, in the past, what we've done before ESSR funds is essentially, as a district office, the academic team with schools decided, you know, here are the, we're going to purchase IXL math for every school. And so now what we'll have to do is in a few years, not yet, have a conversation around, you know, will we allocate, instead of making the decision school-wide, will we allocate a specific budget to schools regarding these supplemental licenses? Or will we go back to the traditional model that we've done in the past of the district office sort of purchasing these licenses across the board? So that's definitely a decision point that we'll be faced with in the coming months.
And I do want to mention, because that was a good time to plug it. We did work in the legislative committee, provided an endorsement for federal legislation. It was something like the Equal Access to School Supplies Act to fund our, similar based on our program, to fund that going forward. So using federal dollars to just supply all students with school supplies. And Dr. Deidre Thomas Murray was kind of instrumental in working with Cory Bushes to, to give justification for the need, especially in high-need districts, why that was so important. So write your congressperson and tell him to support that legislation. I, I have one other question, and I could save it for the consent agenda. But I noticed, Mr. Watson, there are several items related to chillers and HVAC. Are those the ESSR funds? Or are they something else?
Yes, all of those items related to HVAC repairs, automation are as related to address indoor air quality.
So going back a few months ago, and you have the environmental consultants, and you, you gave us a couple of presentations about air quality and addressing that. This is sort of the culmination of the RFP process, the analysis of the air quality targeting those schools. And so we'll be able to start seeing those installations this summer?
That is great.
Excellent, great, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Watson or?
I do.
Dr. Crepo?
Mr. Watson. When we're looking at the ESSR dollars, a lot that I've noticed, today I was in Columbia School and a lot of the other schools, the ceiling plates, are we, are those like part of the ESSR, like replacing it? I'm, I can imagine air quality, whatever, whatever in regards to this. But are we looking at replacing the ceiling tiles or plates for the schools?
Yeah, so that is, that will likely be our spring and summer break projects, where we will diligently work to replace all ceiling tiles throughout the district. That it is a process just because of staffing and some other projects that we'll be working on. But that will be the plan to start replacing ceiling tiles throughout the district.
And I can say, I have seen a lot of brand-new window shades that have been put up throughout the school. So I, I have seen that in regards to the ESSR dollars. And something else that I noticed today, there was a water fountain at Columbia School. It's not, it's a good thing, Mr. Watson. There's a water fountain, but it was the old water fountain, but you really can see the new piping to show the filter that was installed in it a while. So I, I was impressed to see that. So see, I have something good for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Crepo. I'd like to continue with providing the board with an update on our transformation plan, our comprehensive school improvement plan that was submitted to DESI, to the State Education Department on January 9. And so each month, our pillar leads will bring you an update about where we are, the progress that we're making, and our progress specifically toward goal attainment. So I'm going to ask pillar lead, for pillar number one, Deputy Vanoy and her team to come up to the podium. Thank you.
We're square. Will you leave me? Good evening, everybody. Tonight, the five pillar leads will share information on our comprehensive school improvement plan, or commonly known as CSEP. However, in St. Louis public, we call it the Transformation 4.0. So that's what we'll be giving an update on tonight. Each pillar lead will discuss the results of Transformation 3.0. They're going to outline the goals for 4.0 and then discuss strategies that will be used to reach those specific goals. Pillar one's title is create a system of excellent schools. For Transformation 3.0, we have, we had four specific goals, outlining attendance, safe and secure schools, financial sustainability, and efficient and equitable staffing. Of those four goals outlined on the screen, we met two of the four, financial and safe and secure schools. The other two were significantly impacted by COVID-19 pandemic, and this caused us the inability to successfully meet the criteria. For 4.0, we will be aligning our accountability goals to the new metrics in MSEP-6. Our fund balances will continue to be a focus. Our staffing needs will be met with innovative and strategic practices, along with a focus on the retentions of teachers from year to year, and also a tight deadline to fill vacancies at 90% level at the start of each semester. At our 71 locations, we'll be compliant with the Energy Star score of 75 or higher, making us in line with the City of St. Louis compliance requirements. A few strategy activities that I would like to highlight are training for our building leaders on MSEP-6 changes and metrics. We're going to do an audit in, in partnership with Council of Greater City School on our transportation. We're going to support and train, reminding parents and staff how important student attendance is. We're going to have an onboarding ambassador in every school, which will also help with an expedited hiring timeline. We'll look at the federal energy saving involvement. We'll enhance the curb appeal at each of our schools, and we'll allocate funds to high-priority initiatives. At this point, I will hand the mic over to Dr. Michael Brown, pillar two.
Good evening. As you look at Transformation Plan 3.0, a lot of those were not met. But a lot of those were not met because a lot of the initiatives that we had were in person. And during the pandemic, we did not have schools. So students were not involved in a lot of those activities. One of the things we did do for 4.0, as you can look at the, as you see, the first one is to increase, okay, the high school dual credits and some other things. Dr. Mitchell, Dr. Gill as well have started, they started last year, adding courses, adding electives to the high schools to make sure that those students were receiving adequate electives within their school. As you heard earlier, also, you're looking inside 2A, field experiences. You heard earlier, Ms. Banks has added money to all schools to kind of expand outside the classroom. So therefore, it's just not learning within the classroom. Students are getting that experience outside of the classroom as well. Drop down to 2B, the Equitable Access for Gifted Education. One of the things that started this year, the gifted education under the academic department with Dr. Marianne Smith and Dr. Tasha Mitchell, they are starting to test all second graders within the district. This is something new that we're doing to make sure that we're allowing, or allowing for students to have a chance to participate in a gifted program, starting in grade three. 2-point C, health access. One of the things we talk about all the time within our, our city and within our students is access to health. One of the things we, we started this year was a partnership with Hazel Health, where every student, all 19,000 students in our district have access to a pediatrician. This is something that's new this year that we've incorporated. One of the things we're, we're starting to do in a partnership with our OIA department is to relaunch this so that parents are more aware of what's going on. Nurses have started calling. Nurses have been talking to different parents. But we have had some students who visited the, the Hazel Health Center in some of our schools. 2D, Equitable Access to Mental Health. This was very important. I think during the June board meeting, I spoke about how we were going to transform and make mental health more aware, make our parents more aware. If you can remember back then, we wanted to change, we know that they were going to change the crisis line, the suicide line to 988 from the 188 number. And we talked about that during the June meeting. During the August months, we expanded our website to add different mental health resources for our parents. After the incident in October, we expanded even more. So if you look at the website, on our website, we have all of our resources there. We've also provided virtual as well. Monday, Wednesday, Friday of every week, there's a link that goes out where parents or students can call in to receive assistance from a licensed therapist. So those are the, the updates for pillar two. Pillar three is led by Mr. Burton.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the board. So as we can see from Transformation 3.0, the first 3A was at least 33% of newly hired principals would come through a pipeline that was not met, although 100% of our new leaders did go through a training program. And we have developed three leadership academies, but they are not pipelines. And those academies cover cohort-based learning experiences, interactive communities of practice, authentic practices via reflective experiences, one-on-one coaching sessions, competency-based learning modules, and asynchronous support. We're continuing with that work, and we expect the development of a pipeline as part of our, our new goals. The goal around 3B, which was the achievement of annual retention, again, that goal of 84% was not met this year. It was met in previous years in 3.0. The goals around 3C, related to school leaders being satisfied or highly satisfied. The goal was not met. We did increase responses to our cultural competency surveys. We provided training for principals related to cultural competency. And then 3.0, 3D, again, that goal was not met. However, we did develop a process and select leaders, and teachers and ISS monitors were trained around cultural responsiveness. And the new goals, we see career pathways is the goal by 2025, to have that developed. 3B is around teacher retention. 3C is culturally responsive schools. And 3D also relates to chronic absenteeism. As it relates to teacher retention, we have developed our teacher pipelines, which we've discussed before. Prior to last year, teacher retention hovered around 85%. This last year dipped as a result of the Great Exodus related to COVID and returning to school to 79%. We increased involvement in our cultural, our culture surveys this year. Approximately 85% of our schools or employees in schools responded to that survey, which is more than double what it was in the fall. And then looking at our culturally responsive schools, we've added training for our leaders. And so in progress, we have culturally, our Culture and Climate Committee looks at student discipline and data district-wide and is creating strategies to address leader and teacher needs. Student discipline was declining prior to the pandemic where it stopped, obviously. And then last year, upon our return, we saw a significant increase in student discipline. This year, that number is returning back to, to normal levels and declining. And then lastly, you'll see with out-of-school suspensions, those numbers too are, are type ones have declined this year. The board asked me at its session related to suspensions, what kind of suspensions we were seeing. So in response to that, 36% of our infractions are related to assaults. 24% are related to drug possession. 18% are weapon possession. And then 8% weapon use, and then 7% are related to being under the influence. And we're continuing in that work. All right. And then pillar four. Pillar four is?
All right, good afternoon. So pillar four represents the learning and teaching and its impact on scholar growth and achievement, right? So this is our core work as a school district. So looking at Transformation 3.0, I mean, this pillar three goals were identified and tracked. On the left side on the slide, you see progress made on each separate goal since the 1920 school year. I would like to highlight the following. And goal 4.1 has not been met. However, growth has been made, supported by the adoption of our pre-K through 12 literacy textbooks and curricular resources last school year. Results from this school year Semester One Impact Report shows proficiency growth in all grades K through eight, with a minimum of 3% in grade two and a maximum of 14% in kindergarten on our common informative assessments and our common summative assessments. And goal 4.2 was met and is aligned to a 92% four-year graduation rate from last year, the highest on record in many years. And goal 4.3 has not been met. However, growth has been made, supported by the use of state funds to hire and place reading intervention teachers in some of our Title I elementary schools last year. Additionally, last year, we implemented individualized reading success plans as part of our targeted literacy intervention approach for grades three through five. So as we look at Transformation 4.0, in pillar four, the team reviewed and analyzed historical trend data and in alignment with our core work of the academic office and its departments, which has been under new leadership since 2021 of July. We identify five areas. One, early childhood education. Two, curriculum and instruction. Three, college and career readiness. Four, learning and technology integration. And five, English speakers of other languages and English language learners. And so for the purpose of this high-level overview, I'll spotlight three areas and a few strategic activities to support goal attainment. This information you'll notice is on the right-hand side of the slide. So with the goal in early childhood education, we will refine the implementation of our Ready-to-Learn Framework that's also known as Project Construct for all of our pre-K scholars and teachers. And we're also going to use a new resource called Teaching Strategies Gold. That's a framework to apply research-based practices in six specific areas of early learning pedagogy. Those are social, emotional learning, physical, language, cognitive, literacy, and mathematics. Additionally, in the early learning space, we will implement what we are calling beginner garden. And so that's a systematic structure around family connections, whole-child assessment, early learning collaboration, and transition pathways so that we can maintain enrollment from our pre-K schools to kindergarten. With our curriculum and instruction, we will transition from the concept of response to intervention to multi-tiered systems of support, which is a proactive rather than a reactive way to focus on universal design for learning approaches. And that will allow for us to embed in our content resources three particular types of resources at the foundational level, targeted levels, and comprehensive level. Additionally, we will continue to refine our quarterly common formative assessments and our summative assessments for each content area K through 12, so that we're able to engage in our cycles of continuous improvement. Lastly, with our virtual learning and technology integration, we will expand computer science, robotics, and coding. We saw a little bit of that today, to develop a true K through 12 computer science pathway. Additionally, we are working with staff to target professional development on levels of technology integration. Additionally, we are working with staff to target professional development on levels of technology integration. This will be a multi-year professional development that's anchored in the action research. Of the Florida Center for Instructional Technology at the University of South Florida, um College of Education. One thing that I wanted to highlight is that while not identified on a separate goal in this particular pillar. Programming goals and key performance indicators in special education, which represents thirteen point five percent of our district population. Um have been developed by the Department of Special Education in collaboration with all pillar four committee members. And so with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, um Lori Willis, for pillar five.
Good evening. I'm representing pillar five, like most of the pillars, like all of the pillars, it's a cross-functional team. And we work together in pillar five to support all pillars. Grow community partners and resources that support the district's transformation plan. So the document that you're looking at included our goals the first time around with transformation three point oh. We did some tweaking based upon our re- um our retreat that we had with the board and made some um. Little adjustments here and there, but for the most part, I'm pleased to say that we were able to meet the goals that were. Uh assigned to increasing the number of volunteers and mentors by at least ten percent. Increase the number of active partners, and that would be strategic partners, those with MOUs with the district. And community partners who work with the district to provide donations or support in various different ways. We have been able to continue to increase those um active partners. Uh the increasing of the private-public funding to support the district and board goals is also on a good positive track. But I'd really like to call your attention to the increase in the volunteer and mentor engagement in our district. We were able to meet that goal because we had volunteers that would be very, very. Uh supportive of us, that would actually pivot to virtual instruction. And they were on hiatus for a little bit of time, but then they jumped right back in. So we were able to meet that goal now. Uh Director Ryan L. Jackson, who's here this evening, he is um working to uh retain. So we're in a good position right now. We want to retain and of course, we want to immediately start to grow. And you'll see some of our strategic activities are speaking toward that potential growth. We're going to be talking with partners in a different way, a more personal way. We're gonna reactivate the partner engagement program. Where we have them come in to meet some of our principals and to work with us to be assigned to various schools. This is um done in conjunction with the Department of Marketing and Communications. A lot of this work does fall squarely in the area of institutional advancement, where our marketing communications team is. And again, we do support all pillars with the work that we do. And I think that's what makes our pillars so unique. Um Board Member Hubbard mentioned that, you know, it's it's kind of hard to have pillars. Because you don't, it doesn't seem to support, but I think that's probably what we're maybe the roof. So we're supporting. We're doing that. So we're working through some of our increasing of uh uh funding. Uh we're working with the foundation. And uh that generally means that we'll be working with Mr. Halliday Douglas. He is new and he has not been engaged in our. Uh program yet. We do have, I I should say, um part of the team would be Althea Albert Santiago. Principal Angelia Rojo. Mr. Halliday Douglas, Erin Kane, our new director of development, Ryan L. Jackson, and uh Board Member Natalie Val. So I just wanted to highlight those persons who have been working on this for quite some time. But I think the most exciting thing that we're gonna be working on going forward is the tracking and the um. Facilitation of the volunteer tutor and mentoring program. We're very excited about that. Thank you very much.
So I hope what you heard from all pillars is how we do interact. There is coherence between all of the pillars. So at this point, if anyone has any questions uh for any of the pillars, we'll be glad to answer those. Thank you.
Um I had a question. I just would like to know more about the onboarding ambassador. I think that was a part of pillar one.
Yeah, it was pillar one. So what we're finding is we do a really good job here at Central Office, getting their laptop set up, getting their. Um email set up, make sure that they have all the supplies that they need. We make sure they have their chrono swipe. But when they get to the school, we've heard that they feel lost because there's no one there to greet them or walk them through, show them what the teacher's lounge is. Show them all of those things. So in order to uh create a welcoming environment, we want to have. An ambassador at each school to walk new people through those processes.
Is that a staff position?
It'll be a staff position. It'll be a volunteer of a staff member that's that's already there. It's not additional.
And you mentioned that it is gonna help with the the staffing onboarding as well.
Correct, in the school.
Uh this question's probably best for you, Ms. Vanoy. Um. So uh my understanding of M sub six, and I think you're our M sub six representative with Desi. Um part of the sort of shift in importance on this planning document. Is implementation and monitoring of implementation, and that's a board governance uh function. Uh to some extent. Um so what I, what I, what I don't see in this document. Are benchmarks or um, you know, points in time where we're gonna stop and measure. So, I mean, kind of looking at. You know, when we did this five, actually, what, six, seven years ago, because we had a couple of years because of the pandemic, we got a lot of not met's. Um and I I don't think in five years from now, when uh it's time to redo this. Um we, Donna's probably the only one who's still gonna be here. So um. Uh so I just wanna uh ask sort of like, what's the, what's the difference we're going to do? From the, from three point oh to four point oh in terms of monitoring benchmarks. Uh through all the pillars and what we've set, um what we set out as we go forward.
Sure, and I think as Dr. Williams spoke at the beginning, I think we are coming back and presenting quite frequently to the board. We will also start back our pillar subcommittees and they will work on those specific goals and those benchmarks. We know where we're starting because we ended twenty-two, twenty-three, so we know where we need to go for three, four, and five. So I think the conversation specifically in the public, which includes all of you, will certainly be on steroids going forward. We also know that that's something that Desi expects us to do. And with M sip six, there are points aligned to the submission of the C sip Plan. And that's thirty points, and so we want to make sure that we get all of those points. The transformation plan should not be something that sits in a binder on a shelf. It's a living document. We need to review it, we need to align changes to it, and we need to make sure that we're keeping an eye on all of that.
My question's actually more for President Davis and um interim superintendent Williams. Um previously, we had a board member on each of the pillar committees. Um and I think I'm probably the only one that still has an assignment. Is that something that we want to get back to? Um and this is just sort of a discussion for later, but I think it really kind of ties the board's mission to the um the staff's work. In a way that is not overstepping into operations. So just kind of providing some guidance, just as a thought.
I think that's excellent, and as you talk about the subcommittees, uh assigning a board member and, you know, partnering with a deputy superintendent to be your buddy. We've talked about this before in board retreats, but but doing it around the pillars, I think is excellent. So, you know, each of us can have a bit of ownership in that. Um and can come back and, you know, we can discuss it as well. So I think that's a fantastic idea.
I concur.
Um I have a question for Dr. Mr. Burton, I think. Um what does cultural competency have to do with student discipline? I understand cultural competency, I understand student discipline. I don't understand the link.
Sure, um part of it has to do with the way bias impacts the way we discipline students. And so if I'm predisposed, unknown, unknowingly, right, I have a bias, a known bias towards. Particular group of people, children of color maybe, um then those children might be disciplined in ways. That they shouldn't and what might be considered as exuberance in one case would be considered disrespect in another. And so cultural competency allows us to reduce those kind of.
So it's more over-disciplined. Than real discipline, like necessary discipline.
Certainly.
Over-discipline that's caused by, I mean, inner bias. Is that what it, what that means?
Over-disciplined and probably inequitable.
Distribution of discipline?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Um. Okay, that needs to happen.
Yes, ma'am.
I have, Mr. Brown, I have a question for you. First, I want to commend um all of you all. I I do see a notice from. Um what we were able to do at the retreat that some of the information has been, like you've taken into consideration what we as the board members was thinking about. The, and my first question is going to be for you, Mr. Brown, and then. I think I want to go back because I'm trying to understand part of what we were talking about and I'm kind of, I feel like I'm missing. How pillars one through five are are showing that they're working in collaboration with each other. I know part of the conversation that was had, I think, in pillar. Mr. Burton, your pillar four. Pillar three, one of the conversations that was had was pillar three, the challenges with the um. Teachers maintaining our teachers' retention, so on and so forth. It was, it was okay, yeah, we got them salary, but then talking with. Dr. Smith. Your, your challenge was the academic piece, the teachers being able to teach, so on and so forth. And and then it came to student services, which this is where I'm struggling to see where the connection is. Part of the problem we know with our teachers is not all about salary. It's the lack of resources that's being introduced into the classroom, to assist them, which then supports. Dr. Smith, because I'm not gonna try to remember all of these different pillar numbers. But supports Dr. Smith's pillar in regards to getting the the academics that the kid need. If they don't have the the resources which comes from student services that support, I think this is where the breakdown is and we don't see. This level of connection throughout this document. But that's not the question I have for you, Mr. Brown. The question I have for you, I was not aware that we had dual credits. Um for our students. Is that for all of our high schools that we offer dual credits where where? Are we, when we say dual credits, are we saying they're able to get college courses?
That's more of an academic question.
I'm sorry, that's you, Doc, I'm sorry, you presented on it, that's why I asked.
I think that shows a direct connection between like the Office of Student Support Services and the Academic Division. And so I can get you the actual numbers, but we do have in our college and career readiness opportunities for dual enrollment.
Okay.
Um and opportunities for dual enrollment, I B, so that it can actually receive college credits as well. And so we have a variety of those options in our high schools.
So I explained it, remember, I said Dr. Mitchell and Dr. Gill, who are high school network superintendents.
Uh huh.
They're the ones I work in conjunction with. They're the ones that are. So they will come back with the report and give me the data, which we will report to you guys.
Okay, cuz that, to me, for this district, that's very important because the assumption is we don't. And and I think that's a level of branding that I think we need to do better with, letting, letting people know that as a district. We actually do offer that. But overall, I just, that was kind of my, my area of concern. I know you're saying, you know, from this, the two A, it shows that overlap with the pillars or what have you. But somehow, some way, I think we can do a better job in this transformation, like what Mr. Davis is saying. When you guys do come back and report, somehow, some way, we have to to start focusing on how do we. Connect the pillars in a, in a more clear way that everyone can kind of understand it. Instead of the pillars seem like everyone is working in silos, cuz that's not helping you all. As individual, you know, departments, nor is it helping the district in what we're trying to get done.
So let me add something to this discussion about pillar one. So part of the M sip six metrics are dual enroll, dual credit. So goals are set for each high school in those specific areas. So pillar one and then support services and academics are all combined in those types of metrics. Because it's cross-pillars and coherent.
And and that's, that's what, I mean, I get that part, but I think the challenge is. How are we disseminating that information so that others get it? Because I don't, I don't think. To me, honestly, I didn't know, you know, and I don't, some principals or some parents have said, I wish. That St. Louis Public School did that, like this district does it and we don't, but now come to find out, we actually do. And tha- and that's something definitely we need to celebrate.
Understood. Dr. Williams, any other questions?
I have one more. Um can you tell me about the individualized reading plans? Yes, you.
So what's the specific question?
Um. You talked about individualized reading plans. How did those happen? Was it like sitting down with each kid?
Sure, and so that was a part of just federal legislation that we wanted to get ahead of the game just last school year. Knowing that what's coming down the pike is the requirement for individualized reading success plans eventually K through twelve. And so I shared with you that we utilized our state Desi funding last year to hire reading intervention teachers. And so we placed those reading intervention teachers in a variety of our Title One schools. And those reading intervention teachers created a tier-two um intervention program or approach. And that part of that approach was implementing and writing, developing um individualized reading success plans. And so they were able to use data, they were able to meet with each student, they were able to begin to have conversations with family members around. What does this need to look like? What will these interventions look like? Um the board um was able to approve the new curriculum. So we were able to utilize that curriculum resource with Savis to target those interventions as well. And now we're in our second year and a half of that approach and we're refining it now so that we can go down to our K through two level. So that by the end of this school year, we'll have individualized reading success plans for grades K through five. And then eventually, we'll try to get to eight through twelve, what that will look like.
So thank you to our pillar leads and as we continue to deepen our knowledge and understanding. And bring um sort of a collective efficacy to the work. Coherence is the framework that we are centering in our work. So thank you for looking at the integrated parts. And um for us, we'll be very transparent in how we're doing that as a school district. So aligned with a C sip uh transformation plan, pillar one, creating a system of excellent schools. We have some great news to share about Patrick Henry Elementary School. Under the leadership of Dr. Deborah Rogers and her team, Patrick Henry won the state of Missouri's nomination to be nationally recognized. As a U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon School. In two thousand twenty-one, Patrick Henry was recognized as one of America's healthiest schools. And in two thousand twenty-two, they were recognized as America's healthiest schools and a Missouri Green School. Patrick Henry's goal for two thousand twenty-three is to be nationally recognized as a green ribbon school. Which requires nomination by the state. Through their work as a Missouri Green School, Patrick Henry just won the Missouri nomination. Because we function as a team, in the words of John Maxwell, teamwork does indeed make the dream work. And so Dr. Rogers asked me this evening to ensure that we recognize the following team members. Buildings and grounds for the improvement to the physical school site under the leadership of Deputy Square Watson. Food and nutrition under the leadership of Althea Albert Santiago. A I M, A I M, excuse me, zones, healthy schools and healthy communities under the leadership of Leanne White. All of the community partners engaged in the work under the leadership of Ryan L. Jackson. Social, emotional, and mental health resources under the leadership of Deputy Michael Brown. So we want to thank all of our team members for prioritizing the well-being of every student scholar at Patrick Henry. For believing in the projects staff members and student scholars are conducting at Patrick Henry. And most of all, for ensuring that there is a positive impact on the physical, mental, social, and emotional health. Of every student scholar and staff member. Thank you very much. That concludes the superintendent's reports.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. We next move on to the February Consent Agenda Review. Um all board members have a copy of the February Consent Agenda. Are there any questions about any specific items?
I have a question. Oh, two, fourteen, twenty-three, eighteen. And oh, two, fourteen, twenty-three, fifteen.
So it's like you, Mr. Watson, probably.
It's always Mr. Watson. Which one is Mr. Watson? Frable School. Oh, two, fourteen, twenty-three, fifteen.
To approve the purchase equipment installation of building automation upgrades for Compton Drew Frabel and Six.
So that speaks to controls that allows us to more or less control temperatures in classrooms remotely. Currently, those, those facilities, those buildings, we're unable to monitor the temperatures in classrooms. So this will allow us to upgrade our automation or control system so that we, we will be able to monitor the classroom temperatures within those facilities.
So are you, is, is this an issue for all of our schools or just these schools in particular?
Just those, well, there, there are issues in other schools. Those are what we call those heat pump schools. So they require just a little bit.
Because they're older.
They're definitely older, and they require a little bit more, I should say, upgrades when it comes to either the server and just the automation, well, controls for, for us to monitor those buildings. We do have others that have similar issues, but those are like, those are the most severe and need, and quite frankly, I think they need the, the most attention. Just because over the years and over time, we have been unsuccessful with, we have to physically have someone there to actually
Turn on.
Turn on the system, turn on the temperature and/or just to kind of gauge the readings of those classrooms.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And oh, two, fourteen, twenty-three, eighteen, to approve the acceptance funds from the Missouri Department of Education and Secondary Education for Positive Youth Development. I think that's Mr. Brown. Now I recall reading about, but can you tell me a little bit more about this one?
Yeah, so that's a grant that we just received right before the holiday. As a matter of fact, I found out before Christmas. And what it is, is to provide resources within the school, so during the school day and after the school day for mentorship. And that's basically what we've gotten from, from DESI. There's a little bit more as far as what they could do. They didn't give us a lot of details. So we had to put an RFP out, so that's why we're asking for the acceptance of funds now. There's an RFP now, that's out now for the services, and so we'll bring that back to you in a month.
Okay.
But we have to expend this, the, the funds by June thirtieth.
And I think I talked to Dr. Adams about this.
Yes, yes, you did.
We put it out for RFP, that's the rest.
Yes, we saw for RFP at this time.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll bring the RFP, the reward, once we finish the RFP, we'll bring that back to the next board meeting. There'll probably be a walk-on because of timing.
Okay. I'm sorry, one other question on it. So is this going to, are we introducing this into this school year? Or is this going to be introduced for the upcoming school?
No, that's this school year. Those funds have to be expended by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three.
That's.
Yeah.
We, we all, no one knew about it.
Yeah, we didn't. We just got another one that I think we, you approved last month that we just received that we have to expand by two thousand twenty-three. So a lot of the DESI funds, we don't know they're coming. They don't give us a heads up to say this may be coming. This drops in the superintendent and the president's lap.
This was a line, as far as we can tell, it was a line item budget somewhere in the DESI funds that was meant towards us. No one talked to us. Nobody told us it was in there. We missed it, reading it because it was worded so strangely, which is, was the, was the conversation. So thank you for that clarification. I thought that's what that was.
No problem.
If that helps the rest of the board, but any other questions about the consent agenda? All right, that concludes our review of the consent agenda for February. Next is a board report. I want to move first to make a motion to approve a professional development request from board member Vow, who is our MSBA director, to attend the MSBA director meeting, January twenty-seven through twenty-eight.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Henry.
Ms. Hubbard.
Yes.
Ms. Song-Yeong.
Yes.
Ms. Vow.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Cousins.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next, board reports. Are there any board members that have board reports at this time?
I did my in-person school board training this weekend. And I sat next to, in the same table, as a goat farmer and a sheep farmer and a man who wanted to buy a goat. And it was really just encouraging to see people from really all over this state. It's so easy to get stuck in the divides that we think we have, but there are people all over the state who really are working for public education and for the good of the children where they live. And I just left knowing a lot more about governance, but also just feeling encouraged. I didn't buy a goat, though.
No report.
No report at this time.
No report at this time.
Yes, I have a report. We're coming on the home stretch for citywide. We're pretty much sixty percent done with it. We did have our citywide ad hoc meeting last night. Unfortunately, due to the weather tomorrow, we are going to have to cancel our public meeting, but we will be having our work, all of our work group meetings scheduled for Thursday. I had the opportunity today to go to one of the schools, Columbia Elementary School. And I, and I can honestly say it's a hidden jewel. I didn't realize the school was there and I didn't realize all the fantastic things they actually have going on in the school. But today, they worked in collaboration with the Police Athletic League, and they actually gave away coats and gloves to the kids, to the, to all the students. All the students had opportunity to get gloves and hats and coats. But what I thought and saw that was like phenomenal was actual teaching. You know, the kids, the setup, the classroom setup, the principal there is just doing an outstanding job. Her teachers, I had one teacher that was constantly thanking me, and I had to really take, take a moment and say, ma'am, why are you thanking me? I have to thank you. You know, you're doing an aw, an awesome job in educating our kids, and I thank you for your service. And she had a full classroom, and she wasn't, you could tell she enjoyed doing what she was doing. And, and I asked her, how long has she been teaching? And she said twenty years. And, and that's outstanding, in my opinion. So I want to publicly acknowledge Columbia. I want to acknowledge the fact that the principal had the initiative to actually work with the police athletically. For those of you all who don't know who they are, they actually do a lot of the sports for our kids within the city for free. And what they, the board member, his company actually donated all the coats, and they actually provided an outstanding service, and all the kids were smiling and happy. So I wanted to make sure I acknowledged that.
We have not had a legislative meeting this month. We are planning for on the thirty-first, the parent day of action. If parents want to join the pack, as well as some of the board members and others in Jefferson City, there is still availability to sign up for that, and that is on our website. In terms of the legislation, we'll, we'll have a legislative committee shortly thereafter. We spoke before about how there's approximately a hundred and fifty education bills that were prefiled. Hearings began substantively this week, and they are going through education bills at a rapid clip. In fact, I think we expect them to start voting them out of committee tomorrow. They've limited public discussion. They've limited advanced notice to a lot of these hearings where they'll post it at the exact twenty-four hour mark. The hearings for the Senate, the hearing schedules for the Senate and House Education Committees are set at eight AM, which we've been there before. It's very difficult to get from St. Louis to Jefferson City by eight AM, especially for a lot of people that would like to testify, and that is a tactic to make sure that people don't go and testify. So it's not a lot of optimism on the education front out of Jefferson City, at least at the committee level in week number one. So we'll have a substantive update from Mr. Carroll at our, our next legislative meeting. So that's the bad news. The good news is in terms of superintendent search, we have up to this point remained on target. We named three finalists. Two of the external finalists have visited already this week, Monday and Tuesday. Our next step is we will have videos of each of the final candidates available on our website. We said Thursday, I'm a little cautious to promise Thursday just based on the weather. But hopefully by Friday at the latest, that will also include surveys, which the public can weigh in on their impressions of the candidates and based on the video and the biographical information that we'll present, which the board will take into account. Our original promise was to hopefully make an announcement by the end of this month. And so like I said, we've hit all of our targets so far, so far, so hopefully we can continue to meet those targets. Snow notwithstanding.
Didn't we reschedule the, did, did we reschedule the public meeting on the twenty-fifth? You didn't, I just. I said it. It was, it's canceled tomorrow, and it's rescheduled. I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Song-Yeong. Thank you very much. It's, it's rescheduled for February the eighth at O'Fallon YMCA Complex.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other board or committee reports, or questions about the board or committee reports? With that, I'm going to make an, a motion.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
I do want to recognize, and I, I get on them all the time, but I do want to recognize Mr. Watson, Dr. Mitchell, and all of the team that put in tireless hours, efforts. And I know it was hard and working to get central vision and performing arts open back up. I want to really seriously thank you. I know it was, it was a hard pill, and it's a very hard uphill battle in what you all are doing. So I want to publicly acknowledge and thank you, the entire team that was a part of getting that done. Thank you for that.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn this open session and return to closed session in accordance with Missouri revised statute six, one, oh, oh, two, one, subsection one, two, three, and thirteen.
Second.
Ms. Hubbard?
Here, I mean, yes.
Ms. Song-Yeong?
No, yes.
Ms. Vow?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Cousins?
Yes.